Hello. We're gonna try and start. Hello.
Yeah, I can't either.
We're gonna try to start, so. Be honest. Save it to the accident later. Are we underway? Good evening, we're here to discuss the main, recent main law, LD seventeen oh six, which derived from LD two thousand and three, which is called the Housing Opportunity Program. And it's designed to increase housing opportunities and hopefully affordable housing opportunities in Maine communities. And one thing to be known is we, we, Mike Gerber, our CEO, has worked with the state to come up with an ordinance that reflects the portions of the bill which concern Sorento. And if we do not vote on this act prior to July first of this year, the state law will take effect and we'll be governed by that. That said, there are, there are some differences between our act and the state law, but they're not significant. The draft ordinance has been reviewed by the state and it's been reviewed by the town attorneys for conformity to the legal requirements. Mike, is Mike there somewhere?
Yeah, I'm here.
Mike has prepared a PowerPoint presentation which covers the essential aspects of this bill. And if you want to do the screen sharing, Mike and Rob.
Well, no, he can.
You can, okay. All right, so I'll let Mike, who is our, for those of you who don't know, is our code enforcement officer and also is a code enforcement officer for Green Sullivan and in Bar Harbor as well.
Okay, so can you guys see the screen? Sorry, hit the wrong button. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks for the introduction, Tom. As Tom mentioned, the planning board has been discussing this legislation that goes into effect from the state on July first. The purpose of Sorento looking at making adjustments to its land use ordinance to be in compliance with that will, one, allows us to make some town-specific language changes and also prevents the possible litigation down the road should we not have it in our land use ordinance and not be consistent with state law. So that's, that's the main reason that we're moving in this direction. There will be time at the end for questions, but if someone has a question during the presentation, if you want to raise your hand for the folks that are there and notify the planning board so they can catch my attention, and then if you're online, maybe, Rob, you can keep an idea of if folks are raising their hand on Zoom.
Okay.
Okay, so the background is in April of 2022, the governor signed LD two thousand and three, which was entitled an act to implement the recommendations of the commission to increase housing opportunities in Maine. There was a commission that had been working for a year prior to that and put together a report on suggestions on a way to help alleviate the lack of housing in general and then, of course, the lack of affordability. So LD two thousand and three focuses on removing regulatory barriers to increase housing production in Maine while preserving municipal ability to create land use plans. So this is one of the few times when the state supersedes the town's ability to make its own land use ordinance. So the only other recent example would be the shoreland zoning regulations, which each town can adopt to their own land use ordinance, but they're required by the state. So this is a similar type thing. It's, we have the ability to create our own land use ordinance, but we have to comply with these state laws. So LD two thousand and three adds in additional density for affordable developments, allows for multiple dwelling units on lots, and also creates a category for what's called accessory dwelling, and we'll get through each one of those. So there was some discussion and pushback about LD two thousand and three that went around through several rounds of conversations at the legislature. And in 2023, some of it was updated in LD seventeen oh six, but basically the real change was that it pushed the implementation date back to July first of this year. So we took the town's current land use ordinance and worked with the State Department of Economic and Community Development, DE, DECD, so if I say that moving forward, that's what I'm referring to. The DECD was the department of the state that was empowered to manage what's this legislation, which has been put together to be called the Housing Opportunity Program. So their, their input was that our ordinance did not need major revisions to be in compliance with LD two thousand and three. So we basically have a single page of changes that need to be put into the land use ordinance to be in compliance. The presentation is longer than a page, but that's really all we're changing. So what they did is they found that some of the legislation requirements did not apply to Sorento because we don't have zoning and we don't have a comprehensive plan that has identified growth areas. So out of all the parts of LD two thousand and three that applied to us were the addition, a bonus dwelling provision, which allows more housing on a lot than our land use ordinance would normally allow, and also allows the creation of accessory dwelling units, which is abbreviated ADU. So the first part of that is the density bonus, and there's two parts. The first part is if the property has an existing residential dwelling unit, two more may be added to that, to that lot. One thing that's important when we talk about dwelling units is it's pretty easy for us to think houses, but that's not necessarily so. So dwelling units could be a small apartment, a mother-in-law apartment, if you will, an apartment above a garage. It could be a duplex is two dwelling units. So it's not necessarily putting a bunch of houses on a piece of property. And then the second part of the density bonus allows that if you, if you have no dwelling unit on it, it allows you to put two on there as long as it's a conforming lot. Conforming lot, the definition of a conforming lot is, does it meet the minimum lot size width and road frontage? Sorry, I keep hitting the wrong button. So in order to be able to use the density bonus, lots must have minimum lot size, which is a half acre in, in Sorento, needs to be able to meet the main subsurface wastewater rules, which dictate how septic can be installed and soil quality and the minimum lot size usually, unless there's a variance granted for septic systems, is also a half acre. They'll also have to meet the shoreland zoning. So in some cases, the density bonus won't be allowed because in shoreland zoning, the lot size is, is an acre. So a half acre lot, while if it were not in the shoreland zone, could take the density bonus. If it is in the shoreland zone, it would not be eligible for a density bonus. Subdivision laws also apply. So in the case of where three residential dwelling units are created on a lot, if that's done within a five, five-year period, they would have to go through subdivision review at the planning board. And then they also have to meet whatever dimensional requirements are put in the land use ordinance. And at this time, that example of that would be setbacks. In other words, you have to be so far from lot lines and from the road. The second part of the legislation that we're suggesting that we adopt is the idea of accessory dwelling unit. And accessory dwelling unit is basically a property owner has, if they have a house or a dwelling unit of some sort on the property, they're allowed to add an accessory dwelling unit. And we'll get to the definition of that in a second. They must also meet minimum lot size and width, the septic system, the zoning subdivision, and all dimensional requirements. Accessory dwelling units may be allowed on non-conforming lots as long as the accessory dwelling unit does not further increase the non-conformity. This is a provision that's in the language that won't really apply to us at the present time. But in the future, if we add things like an area per family or a minimum amount of lot that's required for each dwelling unit, this would apply in that case. So this is a provision that will help us if the land use ordinance changes in the future. In addition, accessory dwelling unit may not be advertised, rented, or used as a short-term rental unit. And an accessory dwelling unit must be subordinate in size and volume to the existing residential unit. So to use an example, if someone had a home on the property and they wanted to put an ADU in, they would be allowed as long as they have minimum lot size and hit the setbacks, can get a septic system, and the unit is going to be smaller than what's existing there. So the proposed, well, before we get into the proposed changes, are there any questions on this information so far?
Steve?
Yeah, I have one. I'm curious, in the definition of density bonus, forty-three sixty-four A, it allows up to two additional residential dwelling units. And the accessory dwelling unit, forty-three sixty-four B, it only allows one. What's the differentiation?
So the, the whole idea of all of this legislation is to produce different options for increasing housing. So for instance, some of the sections of the legislation that does not apply to Sorento is there's also a density bonus increase that's available for, if you're putting in affordable housing, you can actually add more. So I think the idea behind adding residential units and increasing on a lot or an accessory dwelling is just to give options. Someone may not want to build another house on their property, but they may want to create an accessory dwelling, like an apartment or a little cabin or something like that. So it's not a one-size-fits-all type of legislation. And there are many different types of communities in the state, from more urban areas to more rural areas. And so I believe the legislature, its intent was to create a number of different opportunities to increase housing.
Thank you.
You're welcome, anybody else? Okay, so what's proposed to change in our land use ordinance? So the first part that we're looking to, to add is in section nine, already exists in the land use ordinance, is to put the definition of minimum lot size in that section. The definition of minimum lot size already exists in the land use ordinance, but it's only in the definitions section. So we want to clarify that in the section that's talking about minimum lot size and setbacks and all that information, it makes sense for it to be, also be in this section. So we're not creating anything new here. We're moving from one place to another to, for clarity and ease, ease of use. We are suggesting to put in the density bonus. So this is the language directly from the new legislation. So there's two parts. If you have an existing residential unit, you can add two units. And if you have nothing on the property, you can put two units. It further clarifies density bonus that must meet minimum lot size, provide for compliance with subsurface wastewater, all zoning subdivision and dimensional requirements. So basically what we talked about already. The third part to be added to section nine is accessory dwelling. And this is basically the information we've already discussed. And then we need to make some changes to the land use ordinance by adding definitions. So we added the definition of an accessory dwelling unit, which is a room or group of rooms designed and equipped exclusively for use as living quarters for only one family. It includes mobile homes, not RVs, and it must be subordinate in size and volumes to the existing primary residential unit and cannot be used as a short-term rental. The next definition is multi-unit housing. And that's just to clarify because we may be looking at multi-unit housing when we put more than one residential unit, whether they're connected or not, on the same lot. And this is, this definition comes directly from the legislation that we're hoping to comply with. The definition of recreation vehicle is included in here simply because it's referred to in the previous definition of accessory dwelling unit. The definition that we're using here comes from the shoreland ordinance that's already in effect in, in the town. So basically what this does is this clarifies that a recreational vehicle is not a residential dwelling unit. So there's a difference between an RV and manufactured home or what many people would call a trailer. So we're just clarifying that. We, there's a definition of short-term rental because that's referred to. This comes from the state. And that's what we're proposing. So we have opportunity for additional questions, what-ifs, that kind of thing.
Any questions in the room? Dale?
I guess just a comment, that's on the, on the round of long-term and short-term. It seems to me like the ideal situation for a rental is the main house for the owner and then renting the accessory building as a, as a rental. If you're there, so if there's a problem, you're there to take care of. We both for the long-term, both for the long-term rental and particularly for the short-term. One of the things I keep, or one of the things I hear floated for the short-term is that the owner needs to be somebody that's local. And I don't know whether that's going to take effect or not. This sounds maybe like that would kill them. The other thought would be that if I have a main house, I do an accessory building, my kids want to come and live in it, I can't charge him rent? He's going to live there rent-free?
I didn't hear, I didn't hear all of that, I heard the last part. You can, you can rent an accessory dwelling unit, you just can't rent it for periods of less than thirty days at a time.
That's not, not the way I'm reading, am I reading it wrong?
It says it can't be used as a short-term rental. Short-term rental by definition is a rental property or a dwelling unit that's used, rented for periods of less than thirty days.
I still go back to, I can still go back to the, the short-term rental. It's maybe like it's an ideal situation, that the owner lives in the house of the same property, that would eliminate some of the issues that you have with the short-term rental.
This doesn't preclude the town dealing with the issue of short-term rentals in the comprehensive plan and for the ordinances. Also, I would think that the case you're stating where it was a family member, I don't know whether adult family members, the family unit, really isn't well-defined or maybe the state, you know, unmarried couples, are they a family unit? I, that's another. It goes beyond the scope.
Yeah, I'd also like to clarify that the reason that we're adding this information and proposing it gets put into the land use ordinance is to be consistent with state law. We are not proposing any changes to the land use ordinance other than that. So while there has been discussions at the planning board and perhaps during the comprehensive plan efforts about what to do about short-term rentals, state law dictates that your land use ordinance has to follow your comprehensive plan. So we've hesitated in making any new changes to the land use ordinance until the comprehensive plan is completed. And so if, if, when that plan is completed, it suggests that the town might want to change the land use ordinance in some way about short-term rentals or any other thing, that would be the time to make those changes. So we've avoided making any changes that are not just to be consistent with state law.
I just would offer that the comprehensive plan committee is seeking community input and I believe will be holding discussions with regard to short-term rentals and so on in, in the future, and I encourage people to participate. We have a question from Dan outside.
Yeah, just a follow-up on that, on the short-term rentals. What I noticed in, if you looked at the MRSA paragraph forty-three sixty-four Charlie, it identifies short-term rentals. It doesn't say anything about a duration of time. What it says in this, in the LD two thousand and three, it says that a short-term rental means living quarters offered for rent through a transient rental platform as defined by Title thirty-six, Section seventeen fifty-two, subsection twenty Charlie. So I think, Mike, what might be fair is to, if you have a reference for where you came for the thirty days, maybe apply that here because it certainly isn't in the LD two thousand and three.
I will put the reference, that is a definition directly from the state, and I will put the reference in there. Thank you, Dan.
Okay, hey, since, since I've also been speaking here, hey, I am, I have looked also at the ADU and the, the ADU language in the draft ordinance that you have. It seems to be an error regarding the state, section six, again, paragraph forty-three sixty-four Bravo, regarding the accessory dwelling units and the, the economic development guidance. The main law does not require a conforming lot or specify lot size as a lot use condition for the ADU. So within the guidance document, there was a frequently asked question that says if a pre-existing single-family dwelling is on a non-conforming lot with respect to size, frontage and similar characteristics, can an ADU be built on that lot? And the answer was, an existing dwelling unit may be allowed on a lot regardless of whether the lot conforms to existing dimensional requirements of the municipality. It further goes on to say, a municipality must exempt an ADU from lot size requirements. So I, I, what I propose to you, I suggest to get that land use and the compliance, that you strike the word "conforming" on the first sentence. So it'll read that one accessory dwelling unit, ADU, to a lot. And then in the second sentence, strike the term, meet minimum lot size because, and then that will read that lots must provide for compliance with subsurface wastewater system requirements. And, and Mike, the way I see it here is with the above changes, that will put you in alignment with paragraph forty-three sixty-four Bravo three alpha, which is the zoning requirements with states, at least one accessory dwelling unit must, they use the word must, be allowed on any lot where a single-family dwelling to the principal of, is a principal structure. So I propose that you make those changements to align with what the state has offered.
So thank you, Dan, I appreciate your input. I would like to make two points. One is you're referring to a guidance document. So it was an exponent, it was designed to explain and help direct conversations. It's not mandatory to meet all the things in the guidance document. And I'd be happy to take our proposal and take your suggestions and put them back to the DECD to see if we still comply with their, the legislation. They've already reviewed it once, but I'm happy to do that again. The other part with the conforming lot size is not every town has a minimum lot size as small as Sorento's. And so in Sorento, the half acre meets the minimum lot size for a septic system that's established by the state. So the idea of putting additional dwelling units on a smaller lot could be problematic from a septic system standpoint. So I'll take it back and have them review it again, per your suggestion.
Yeah, I'll put that to you in writing. Certainly when I think about the ADUs, things that have happened even in the city, they've allowed them to.
Mike responded to your question, and maybe there's some other people who have comments?
Oh, absolutely.
Were there any other comments, questions? I don't think so. I was remiss in, in not introducing the planning board, who may not be familiar to all of you. Dan Gierman is our, our junior member.
Yeah.
Junior senior member.
Junior senior member, right, he's been, he's been here before. And Beth Clark is a returning, a veteran.
Yeah, we both are.
And you both are, right. And I'm Tom Bailey, and I'm not a veteran or a returning member, but I'm probably senior. In any event, are there any other comments or questions?
This is Lynn Stone, I have a question.
Sure, Lynn, go ahead.
I am not a hundred percent grocking the direction of how we're changing, what we are changing preemptively so that we don't. My understanding is we're trying to catch up now before the, so we have these laws in place before the new state laws come in. And I was just curious if somebody could summarize the intention of the changes? Like, what are we trying to safeguard or deal with? I'm just, I'm just curious if somebody could give me a quick summary on that? So I could reread what's available to read with that comprehension, thank you.
So the, the language that has been proposed to the Sorento land use ordinance is to put the ordinance Is to put the ordinance in compliance with state legislation that goes into effect July first. Uh, there were two pieces of legislation, LD two thousand and three and LD seventeen oh six. Uh, that put together a program to increase housing opportunities within the state. There are four different sections to that. Uh, they don't all apply to Sorento. Um, but basically the summary is uh to encourage the development of residential units. Whether they're houses, apartments, uh townhouses, apartment buildings, what, you know, whatever. Uh, to offer more housing within the state.
Uh, to clarify my my question, are we making refinements or changes in Sorento that are? Any different than what is going to kind of go into effect for the whole state? Like, are we trying to, are we getting a jump on it? In someone that I'm not understanding?
Creating anything new, we're creating language to be consistent with the slate state legislation. Um, we do not have to uh in include all of the sections of the legislation. Uh, because of not having zoning in town. And uh not having a growth area established. And also uh not having public sewers and water. There are some added benefits if if we, well, you could call them benefits. There's additional housing uh density bonuses uh available if we had zoning. A designated growth area or public water and sewer. So those sections do not apply to Sorento. So they're not included in the land use ordinance changes.
Is this an okay time for me to mention something odd that I've learned that? Or is this not a good time about about ADUs and and short-term rentals? Or should I keep that?
Let's keep it to the.
Okay.
I guess uh Dan has a follow-up question. If you can keep it brief, Dan, without a recitation. Citations, that would be helpful.
Um, so actually, this is not Dan. It's Susan sitting next to Dan. So one of my questions is, is it possible and has anybody thought about, you know, because we're trying to attract young people to Sorento. And it's very expensive to get here. Would it be possible to allow, let's say it's a young couple, they're married. And they, the family has some land and they say, okay, we can give you some of this land at an affordable price. And all they can afford is an apartment with, you know, a garage four hundred square feet. And now they'd like to start a family and like to have a house. So could they, could we now classify the house as the primary dwelling? And call that garage apartment an accessory dwelling to allow young people to start out?
Mike, to answer your question, I believe uh it says a property owner with an existing residential dwelling unit. May add one accessory dwelling unit. So um if they started off with something that's small, uh by definition. The way this is proposed, the accessory dwelling unit would have to be smaller. Uh, that being said, if they want to use the density bonus. You can, if you have an existing residential dwelling unit, there's no reference to size, you can add two more dwelling units. Uh, so it doesn't necessarily, you don't necessarily have to take the accessory dwelling unit path to adding housing.
Okay, just to clarify, a young couple can build a garage four hundred square foot. And they're, they outgrow it and they now have the money to be able to build a bigger house. They can go ahead and do that. As long as they've met the the size requirements and they've got the septic and water situation under control.
Providing they meet the requirements set forth in the land use ordinance, uh that would seem to be correct.
Okay, and um but they would be limited to the, they could only rent it for either thirty days. Or annually or six months at a time.
There is no restriction on the density bonus residential units for short-term rentals at this time.
Okay, so the young couple has the four hundred square foot apartment. They could rent that with a short-term rental unless there's changes with our regulations.
As this is proposed in our regulations are regardless of the age of the couple or the size of the dwelling unit, that would be so.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, um, Mike. Any any comments from the planning board? And I forgot to mention that Bob Warhol is um on the planning board and he is zooming. So if there are no further questions, um this is not necessarily the final hearing. We're planning to vote on this at the annual town meeting or in a special election at the time time of the town meeting. Um, and if it seems warranted, we can hold an additional hearing. Um, if more questions come up and of course people are feel free to, should feel free to. Um, submit questions to the the planning board and uh and to the. Um, to Mike if they happen to see him. Um, Mike, I really appreciate your preparation of the the uh PowerPoint. And um, you know, your educated response to these questions. Does anybody else have anything further to contribute? Okay, well, I think.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
I think that. Night, everybody. Thanks for coming out. This is a great turnout.
Thank you, everybody. We're gonna end the recording.